Ah, okay. Okay.
Just came down from the manager. People from along those. But I haven't seen any new documents since technically nothing. Nothing changed.
Yeah, it's good. A whole meal.
My learning, my learning.
I got, I got learned. They kicked him out of that.
Yeah, what was funny is that that.
Okay. Good evening, we'd like to call the Durham City Council Meeting to order at 7:03 PM on Monday, October 17th and certainly want to welcome all of you there with us this evening. Could we just take a moment for a solid meditation, please? Thank you. Recognize Councilman Davis to lead us in the pledge.
Many of the citizens of the United States of America, in the Republic of Washington, stand as one nation, under eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can you call a roll, please?
Mayor Bell, Mayor Pro Tim Cole McFadden, Councilmember Davis, Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Moffett, Councilmember Reese, and Councilmember Shul.
We have two recognitions this evening. The first, I'd like to recognize Moms Rising Steering Committee Member Jessica Burrows. She would join me. And a troops.
Thank you very much. On behalf of all the moms and kids you see here, we're all Durham residents, as well as the forty-one thousand Moms Rising members in North Carolina, we want to thank you for focusing on the early education of Durham's youngest citizens. And we want to present you with a thank you card signed by children ages one to five and parents. Thank you. Thank you for passing a resolution, to all of you. Thank you for passing a resolution supporting the creation of a task force to explore expanded access to high-quality pre-K with the long-term goal of establishing universal pre-K in Durham. So that one day, maybe Sammy here will be able to participate in pre-K. So thank you for having the vision. Thank you, Mayor Bell, for reading to children every year during Week of the Young Child and for focusing and raising awareness on early child education. Thank you for caring about our youngest citizens. And we have, just to show how important and notable this work is, National Moms Rising has created a booklet highlighting just a few cities across the country that are doing extraordinary things to help our youngest citizens. And on page, on the first page, page two, Durham is highlighted for your important work. So our superheroes here are gonna pass out medals to each of you, thanking you for your service, as well as a copy of these booklets and coloring books for you to share with your children, grandchildren, or we won't tell, you can color them yourself. So thank you. And would anyone else like to offer thanks? We're all very gr-.
We're all very grateful. It is a huge investment in our children. We all know that it doesn't just help families, it helps the economy, it helps businesses. And we, we appreciate you very, very much. And we are lifting Durham up all over the country. We're doing deliveries to mayors. We are doing one in Dayton, Ohio tomorrow, lifting up cities and city council members and mayors that realize that this is the future of our kids. And so, we appreciate you. We are proud to say we're from Durham and we're proud to be lifting you up across the country. Thank you all.
Well, let, let me say on behalf of the Durham City Council and certainly all the citizens of Durham, you honor us by recognizing us, but we all recognize that, as I say, our most precious resource are our children. And certainly, when we have an opportunity to recognize them and also thank them for what they do and the young leaders of tomorrow, some of the leaders of today, we're very appreciative. And certainly have to want to thank the parents and all the relatives who also participate and make this possible. So, we're really honored by, by this recognition and appreciate it. Our next recognition is a continuing program that we've initiated. It's the Neighborhood Spotlight, where we highlight and spotlight a recipient who has worked in their neighborhood for the month of October. And this evening, we're honored to recognize Ms. Sue Watson. Sue, if you would join me, please. I think probably everybody, certainly on the council knows Sue. Steve, you know Sue? How you doing? Good to see you, thank you. Sue has been very active in her neighborhood. She can be seen regularly picking up litter around Forest Hills. It's the neighborhood that she represents in Third and Fort Creek and taking care of neighborhood cypress trees. She also is a welcoming person for new neighbors and connects them with the rest of the neighborhood. And when there's a problem in Forest Hills, you can always know, you can count on Sue to help conduct, have appropriate persons to help them in any way they can. I've known Sue, I guess, I'm not gonna say forever, but a few years. And she, she's certainly been a very good friend of this community and I consider her to be a friend. And I'm honored to present this Spotlight Award. And it reads, "This certificate is awarded to Sue Watson in recognition of valuable contributions through the Forest Hills Neighborhood Association, making Forest Hills and Durham a cleaner, safer, and more engaged community, welcoming new neighbors and connecting them with the rest of the neighborhood, picking up litter around Forest Hills Park and Third and Fort Creek, and taking care of neighborhood cypress trees." And it's signed by Tom Barnfield, the city manager, myself. And again, on behalf of the city council, we are pleased to present this to you, Sue. And certainly, if you have any comments, we'd like to hear them. Thank you.
My only comment is, my biggest fan club member is here tonight, my mother, Jerry Watson.
Mr. Mayor, let me just say that I, I did work every day with Sue for thirty years. And for that, she also deserves a medal.
I, I agree, she, she does, thirty years for you, yeah. Okay, let me ask first, are there comments by councilmembers? Recognize Councilwoman Reese, Mayor Pro Tim, in that order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, two weeks ago at our city council meeting, we were joined by some of the folks from the Durham Crop Hunger Walk. And they asked us to consider participating in something called the SNAP Challenge. Essentially, this is a five-day project by which an individual, in this case, myself and my colleague Jillian Johnson, commit to eating no more than four dollars and twenty cents worth of food per day. That is the, that is this year's SNAP allocation for folks that receive SNAP benefits here in North Carolina. The, the, the purpose of this project is twofold. Number one is to raise awareness about just how living day-to-day on that amount of food changes the way you think about what it takes to prepare meals, what it takes to make food choices within that very restricted budget. I can tell you, after just about twenty-four hours, it takes a lot of work and a lot of menu planning that normally you don't have to put up with. Because if you walk out of the house without your lunch, you can just go across the street and get something. That's not really possible on four dollars and twenty cents a day. And while I don't think it's possible, or even the purpose, to give any participant the full experience about what it's like, what the impacts of poverty really are on people on a day-to-day basis, I do think it's important to raise awareness of, of just how little money folks are expected to live on when it comes to their food under this program. The second way that this program helps folks is that we are encouraged as participants to look at what we would normally spend during a week on food over these five days. And then donate the balance, that is what we did not eat this week, by restricting ourselves to twenty-one dollars of food over five days, and donate that to the Durham Crop Hunger Walk. And as soon as I tote that up, and I know Jillian already did that work to do the, the math, to figure that out, but we're both gonna contribute that to the Hunger Walk. So I just wanted to raise that up as something that's going on all across our city this week. People are choosing to go through this experience. And I just want to say thank you to the Durham Crop Hunger Walk and the other participants in that program, specifically Durham Congrations in Action and Hunger Durham and Durham Cares, who are also sponsoring this event. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Recognize the Mayor Pro Tim.
Good evening. I, I actually brought remarks yesterday at that, at that function and challenged them to have us do that during Thanksgiving time, when it would really be difficult to do. And that's my challenge to all of us. So many great things are happening in Durham. This past weekend, the North Carolina Central University Eagles celebrated our homecoming. A part of the homecoming celebration was a football game in which we actually beat down Savannah State University. I really felt sorry for them, they were visitors. And we normally treat our visitors with care here. But it was a beautiful day for football. And then yesterday, the farewell of the Battle of the Bands at North Carolina Central was held. And Adrian Carroll is moving on to a different kind of calling, where he will still be working with historically black colleges and universities. And tonight, I wear this orange ribbon out of awareness for leukemia. In fact, today, at my church, I attended a home-going celebration of a young man, fifty years old, father of two, who lost his battle with leukemia on, on last Tuesday. So we need to be aware of and educate people about leukemia and other kinds of diseases that we need more funding for, for research. Sickle cell anemia, breast cancer awareness, all those kinds of things. I'm just excited about being in Durham. There are wonderful things happening everywhere I go. And that's all I have to say right now, Mr. Mayor. I'm just overcome with the, the beauty of where we live. And we need more people to talk about Durham and the great things that we do, because we really care about other people. Thank you.
Let me ask, are there other comments or questions? I, oh, so this was, weekend was, was really a lot of activity in Durham. The Black Wall Street, which was a, I had an opportunity to attend and the others did also. And I just happened to be downtown Surrey for one thing. And I couldn't help but see all the energy that was happening in downtown, at the ballpark, at the art center, just, just all around town. It was a beautiful day and just so many people were out. And I, it makes you feel good that you have a city such as Durham to enjoy it on a day like we saw this weekend. It was, it was really great. And what was interesting, because nobody knew who I was, you'd be walking behind people and you could hear them, when I say that, I mean, okay, these people didn't know. Anyway, just walking behind people and you could hear them talking about Durham this, Durham this, Durham this, Durham this. And that's, that's what was really, really amazing to me. But having said that, we need to deal with the city's business, so I'm gonna ask the city manager for his priorities.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Priority items this evening, regrettably, are continuation of, or a deferral, excuse me, of six public hearings, item fifteen through twenty. We recognize this is the second time that these public hearings have had to been deferred. And both cases due to a publication oversight at the Herald Sun. For the people who are affected by this, both the, the developers and the petitioners, as well as members of the community who want to appear before the council to voice their approvals, support, or concerns. The administration does want to apologize. I've talked to a number of folks who are very disappointed that they haven't been able to have their day before the council. But I believe all of the, the issues associated with these glitches have been corrected and clarified. And at this time, items fifteen through twenty are now being deferred to a public hearing on November the seventh, 2016. Thank you.
Entertaining motion on the city manager's priority items?
It's been properly moved. Second, Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote?
It passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Recognize the city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No priority items.
Likewise, city clerk?
No items, Mr. Mayor.
Therefore, we proceed with the agenda. First item being consent agenda. An item can be approved if an item is removed from the agenda by either councilperson or a member of the public. We'll discuss that at the end of the agenda. The first item is Carolina Theater of Durham Board of Trustees Appointments. Item two is the Durham Convention and Visitors Bureau Tourism Development Authority Appointment. Item four is the Durham Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Appointment. Item five is the Durham Historic Preservation Commission Appointment. Item six is the Inventory Performance Audit for June 2016 dated August 2016. Item seven is the Resolution to Support the Equal Rights Amendment.
Mr. Mayor.
Item eight is Professional Services Agreement Amendment Number Four for the DCHC MPO Database Enhancements and Application Support. Item ten is a Contract for Professional Engineering Services for the Emergency Action Plan for Critical Forty-Eight-Inch Sewer Main Crossing. Item eleven is Resolution Authorizing City Auction. Item twelve is August 2016 Bid Report. Item thirteen is Construction Management at Risk Guarantee Maximum Price Amendments for Balance of Trades with Leechase Construction Services for the Police Headquarters Complex and CIP Ordinance Amendment. Item twenty-one through twenty-two items that can be found on the general, business agenda as public hearings. Entertaining motion for approval of consent agenda with the exception of item thirteen and item seven. It's been properly moved in second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote?
It passes seven to zero.
We'll move to the General Business Agenda, public hearings. Item twenty-one is an Amendment to Economic Development Incentive Agreement with A&amp;J Capital Corporation.
Mayor Bell, members of council, my name is Chris Dickie with the Office of Economic and Workforce Development. The item before you recommends the approval of a contract to amend the agreement between A&amp;J Capital Incorporated and the City of Durham related to economic development incentive contract awarded to A&amp;J Capital Incorporated on February second, 2015. A&amp;J Capital proposes to renovate an underutilized and blighted building at 406 South Driver Street, which is located along an OED Office of Economic and Workforce Targeted Commercial Corridor located in northeast-central Durham. The plan is to redevelop an eighty-five-hundred-square-foot building into a mixed-use commercial building. A&amp;J Con- the A&amp;J contracts stipulates that capital investments totaling three-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand would need to be in place by February second, 2016. And project close must be finalized by February second, 2017 in order to receive the hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar grant incentive. Staff is requesting that you authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the agreement between A&amp;J Capital Incorporated and the City of Durham dated February second, 2015 that would extend the deadline for project completion to December thirty-first, 2017. If there are any questions, I'll address them.
Okay, this is a public hearing. The public hearing is open. You've heard the staff report. I would ask the first questions by members of the council on the staff recommendation. If not, is there anyone, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Johnson and somebody else? And Councilwoman Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is the applicant present to answer questions?
Yes.
Hey, thank you. I just wanted to ask you a couple, if you could just briefly tell us your, your plans for the building, the current status of the project?
Well, the status of the project is, my name is James Rogers. I know many of the people here, was a city employee for about fifteen years, a long time ago. My plans-
Mr. Rogers, could you speak into the microphone, please? Thank you.
My plans for the building, I've owned it now for a couple of years and have started doing some work on it. It has five commercial spaces on the ground level and the upstairs level was used for residential. And I plan to put two apartments there. I have, there's a barber shop that's currently in the building. It moved in a couple of months ago. There's a minimart in the building. You may have heard, East Durham Pack Company plans to move into the building. We have a letter of interest, have not done a contract just yet. But hers is a new pack company. She, she actually lives over in that part of Durham. And we're both excited about her moving in. There'll be a beauty salon in one of the corner spaces. So all spaces are actually occupied. There's gonna be a virtual office in a smaller space, a seven-hundred-foot space. And we've already planned that out. We have created a website that's gonna be totally automated. So people who need an address in Durham and who need a, a business office in Durham can use. And who, who wants to be in northeast-central Durham can have an address there. Closing is scheduled for the loan to-
I believe you also have something on the second floor, do you not?
Yes, yes. So there'll be two apartments on this, two residential apartments on the second floor. About twenty-five, twenty-six hundred square feet. And those apartments should be pretty nice as well. Everything there will be new. I really like the, the view upstairs in that building. There's a corner spot with windows on both sides and the view is just really phenomenal. The, the neighborhood is, is changing. You know, I've always thought that that building was the focal point of this particular community. When I was in college, North Carolina Central, back in the late seventies, early eighties, there was a shoe store in the corner spot of that building. They sew second-hand shoes. And that is where I went to, to buy my shoes. So I'm really looking forward to, to renovating this building and bringing some life back into that neighborhood. Because I think this is the focal point. If, if I can get that building done, then I think it helps to, to stimulate growth in the whole neighborhood. I, I, like, like you guys, I, I really love Durham. I've been here since I, I came to school here. And I have seen so many changes. I was police officer for a long time. I was attorney for the police department for about eight years. And I remember patrolling in downtown Durham when nobody was there but the police cars. And everything has just, just changed so significantly in a positive way. And I think that's, you know, Mayor Bell deserves, and as well as the council members, deserve kudos for that. Mr. Bell has been around for a long time and has, he's seen a lot of those changes as well.
Thank you. Could you give us a sense of what the rent is gonna be for those apartments and also for the retail space?
Currently, the rents are, for the, the folk who are there now, there's about a seven-hundred-square-foot space that's rented by a young man who has a minimart there. That was there when I bought the building and it has remained there. The, the rent there is like six-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The rent for the barber shop is about a thousand dollars, was a thousand dollars. The apartments will rent for, I think about a thousand dollars each. But they're, they're both, you know, rather, rather large. The corner spaces, the pack companies' rent is gonna be about eleven-hundred dollars. The salon is nine-hundred dollars. And the virtual office, you know, we don't know what- And the virtual office, we don't know what that's going to be. We're just kind of selling leases and spots to people, but we're, you know, hoping that we'll make at least six, seven-hundred dollars a month for that.
It all sounds really affordable. Thank you for giving us that information. One last question, the folks who are currently doing the renovation work, are those contractors being paid living wages?
They are, they are. Most of the subcontractors that I've used so far, they've been Durham contractors. I've even managed to use some people from the community. There are a couple of folk who live over our pedigree, a couple of young guys. One guy, I remember his name is Chris, and I don't know Chris's last name, but he hangs around the neighborhood, and he's always looking for something to do. And, you know, I try to, even though I don't really have a job for them, I find some work for them to do, because if I can keep them busy and keep them coming there every day, they may learn something from the electrician, they may learn something from one of the carpenters. And, you know, I can show you a line of texts where Chris, he calls me and texts me every day, "Mr. Rogers, you got anything for me today?" And I always like to say yes, and sometimes if I don't, I'll just come over and we'll, you know, have a drink or something, a Pepsi. A Pepsi at the minimart, and we'll talk. But yes, I do pay living wages. You know, I don't believe in the seven, eight dollars, because, you know, I think people deserve more than that, and I also believe that you get what you pay for.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate those commitments and your commitment to the community and the work that you're doing here.
Thank you.
Councilman Reese?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that I am, generally speaking, not a huge fan of public dollars going into private developments. I don't think that's going to be a surprise to anyone on the council. Having said that, I did manage to go back and review the plans for this project that were presented, I guess back in February of last year, does that sound right? Actually watched the council's conversation about that and went on to learn some more about you, who I've never met, but I now know quite a bit about. And I just wanted to say that, based on what I learned after looking into the project and the answers you gave to my colleagues' excellent questions, I just want to say that this is exactly the kind of project that we need and exactly that spot. And I think it says a lot about how you feel about the city and that particular neighborhood that you're willing to put yourself into something like this. So thank you for everything you're doing, and I'm looking forward to seeing what happens.
Thank you.
Recognize the mayor pro temp.
Hi, James. Thank you so much for, after we allowed you to graduate from this great university, you decided to stay right here in Durham. I fully support what you're doing, especially your compassion for Chris, and keep him busy. You are a positive role model for so many young black men in that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
All the other council comments, if not, is there anyone in the public who wants to speak on this item, this being a public hearing? Let the record reflect that no one else has to speak on this item. Our public hearing will be closed matters back before the council.
Move the item.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote?
It passes seven to zero.
The next item is item twenty-two, Economic Development Agreement between Durham ID Phase One Developer LLC and the City of Durham.
Mr. Mayor, madam mayor pro temp, members of council, senior members of the leadership of the city administration, I'm Reginald Jones, acting senior economic development manager in the Office of Economic and Workforce Development. The item relates to a modification of the current agreement regarding the construction of at least twenty-one, twenty, two-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand square feet of new commercial space and associated onsite structured parking facility, publicly accessible open space known commonly as Phase One of the Durham Innovation District, Durham ID Phase One located in the Durham Central Park District of downtown Durham. On September twenty-one, two thousand and fifteen, the Durham City Council held a public hearing where council authorized the city manager to negotiate a proposed economic development incentive agreement between Durham ID Phase One Developers LLC for the properties being redeveloped at two-twenty-four, three-zero-one, and three-zero-two Morris Street in the downtown Durham tier of the City of Durham. The total incentive payment amount is not to exceed five million, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars over fifteen years. This agreement was passed. This item before you now is requesting that you authorize the city manager to execute the revised economic development incentive agreement between Durham ID Phase One Developers LLC and the City of Durham for capital investments associated with the construction of Durham ID Phase One for the total incentive that was mentioned earlier, five million, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars over fifteen years. Thank you.
You've heard the staff report. I would ask first, are there questions, comments by members of the council? Recognize Councilman Shul, Councilwoman Johnson, Councilman Reese in that order.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So as I read this, it involves a number of really substantive changes in the agreement. So is the representative of the developer here, Reginald, who could speak to some of these?
Yes, with your permission.
Is that all right with you, Mr. Mayor?
Jessica Brock with Longfellow Real Estate Partners.
Thank you. Ms. Brock, the, this, I've got a number of questions, but let me, let me take it from the top. The, there's a change in the minimum capital investment required, as I read this, from eighty-seven million dollars to, I believe, seventy-eight million, three-hundred-thousand dollars, which is a, potentially a ten percent drop in the minimum investment. Did I, did I get that right?
You did.
Yeah. So I guess I would say to our administration that we don't have a pro forma on that, so it's unclear to me what that means in terms of the return to the city. Does it still fall within our incentive guidelines? Do we, you know, so I'd be, I'm reluctant to vote for this, let me just say, tonight, without some sort of pro forma. This is a significant change in the financial formula that existed when we passed it, so let me just say that, Ms. Brock. I know that's not your problem, but I do want to say that to our administration. But let me also understand the change in the parking spaces, just to make sure I'm clear. I believe the original plan was for eight-hundred-and-twenty spaces and that we were, that the city was to be able to use four-hundred-and-ten spaces for, at nights and weekends for members of the public. And that now that that has changed to a maximum of four-hundred-and-ten spaces that would be available to the public. Is that right?
It is. It's a maximum of four-hundred-and-ten, which is the same as it originally was. So it's eight-hundred-and-twenty, which was four-hundred-and-ten, and so it's still four-hundred-and-ten.
Right. But I think the difference, as I read this, is that you all also reserve, well, it's changed as to, now it's not eight-hundred-and-twenty spaces, it's eight-hundred-and-twenty spaces or as much as ten percent less than that, which is a change from the new agreement. And that this, the number would be reduced at the developer's, you know, initiative, your choice, by as many as eighty-two spaces. So that would potentially mean there would be seven-hundred-and-thirty-eight spaces, over which, as I read this agreement, the city would have no control, and that would leave potentially, but, but the, you all would still have access to four-hundred-and-ten spaces, leaving the public with access to only three-hundred-and-twenty-eight spaces in that situation. So at least that's the way I read it.
I'm not sure that's how I read it.
Okay.
Reginald, you can correct me if I'm wrong. The ten percent only applies to the overall investment. It does not imply to the number of parking spaces that would be available on nights and weekends.
Well, if you look at the agreement, the agreement, if I can find this.
Two-point-one-one is where it says the, an amount within ten percent of the eighty-seven million dollars. I don't see where the ten percent applies to us being able to reduce the number of parking spaces.
That doesn't, but keep looking at the agreement. For some reason, mine has now disappeared from my iPad, but I'm trying to get it back.
I mean, we can, I'm happy to look at the agreement further. That's certainly not our intent, is not to reduce the number of spaces that are available on nights and weekends by less than four-hundred-and-ten spaces. So if we need to clarify the agreement to make that abundantly clear, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. That would be great, because you can read it, but the way I read it is, is a maximum number of spaces for the public of four-hundred-and-ten. And if it was therefore reduced, that, you all, it's not, it doesn't say that you all would reduce the publics, but I just want to make sure that the, that the, that the public is guaranteed-
I'm happy to make that clarification, because that's certainly not our intent at all, is to reduce those number of spaces by ten percent.
Great, great. Now, on the, on the open space, and you can maybe help me here, too. It's my recollection that originally there was a particular parcel of open space that was identified to be kept open to the public, for public use and to be maintained by the developer.
Correct.
And was that parcel, is that where the point-two-two acres in size comes from? Was that the size of that parcel?
Yes, it's exact, it's the same. It's just applying an exact acreage instead of a percentage, but it has not changed.
Okay. So it says here in the agreement that, that the, it sounds, it doesn't, it doesn't specify that the parcel will be where that parcel is now. That is to say, the parcel could be somewhere of the developer's choosing after consulting with the downtown open space plan and that kind of thing. I'm not necessarily against that, but I don't exactly know what it means either. Was that in the original agreement, or is that a change in this agreement?
I think that was in the original agreement. The space is, is where, where it was originally. If we need to make it more clear of exactly where it is, it's in the exact same space. And so we have identified it exactly where it will be.
Okay. Why don't you take a look at the agreement and see if you agree with me? What I, what I think it says is that it kind of can be anywhere after looking at the downtown open space plan. So I think that, in my mind, it would be important to have some more specificity about Was there any reason that you changed the, or that a change is made in the agreement from the seven-point-two-three percent of the acreage to the point-two-two acres?
That was at a request of our lender, that our, your lender, as we go, as we move from conceptual to actual financing, the project to making it a reality. They asked that we move these from percentages to actual, but there is no change. It's the exact same space. It's just moving it from a percentage to an acreage.
Okay. Okay. So again, you know, I would just say, thank you, Ms. Brock, I appreciate it.
Sure.
I would just say to our administration that I would really like to see, I'd like to see a pro forma that would explain what ten percent less investment might mean in terms of our incentive.
Right. I think the way the agreement is structured, though, it all will float. If the investment goes down, then our incentive goes down by the, by the same percentage.
That is our understanding.
It's on a sliding scale. It's so, it isn't, our incentive is, if the investment goes down, our incentive will go down by an equal percentage.
Okay. I didn't understand that from the agreement.
That's the intent behind the agreement.
Yeah. Well, let me, let me, let me study it for a minute, but if that is the intent, then, I mean, if that's, if that's what happens, then that's very reasonable.
And that's typically the way we do all of our agreements.
Yeah. Maybe somebody from the administration can also be looking at this and help me, because I didn't see it, but of course, I just may have missed it. Okay, those are my questions for now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Recognize Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So that answers one of my questions, which was that if there was ten percent less investment, would our incentive also go down by ten percent? So I'm glad to hear that that is the case. My, my second concern was that in the, in the memo, in point three, where it's being described, the changes from a percentage to a fixed number of units, that this allows the project to be scaled up without a corresponding city benefit being scaled up. So for example, under this, this example that's listed here, if you were to construct more commercial space, then, then we wouldn't, sixty-five percent of that additional space wouldn't be required to be continuously occupied, or if you were to construct additional parking, that fifty percent of those additional spaces wouldn't be available for the public. And so my question is, are you intending to, to scale up the development, or is this just a technical change?
It's more of a technical change. As you move to permanent financing off, again, a conceptual, a conceptual plan, we, one thing in order to get this project financed is we have to put actual numbers to it. Our intent is to open the project on nights and weekends. We've agreed, we've agreed in this agreement for fifty percent. However, more than fifty percent of that will likely be open, as we are big proponents of providing more parking in downtown Durham. However, as we move from conceptual to reality, and again, as we try to get permanent financing on this, we have to take numbers that are out of the conceptual into the actual, and that is the purpose of the amendment to this agreement.
Further questions by members of the council? Recognize Councilman Moffett.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Do you, are there people signed up to speak? Okay. I just had a couple of comments. Mr. Baker, the, the section of the agreement that Councilmember Shul was speaking to about parking require, or parking, section three, four, three, three-point, four-point-three is the one that I think is going to need some revision to reflect what we heard tonight. There are two, two sections in the agreement that conflict with each other.
Say it again.
Three-point, four-point-three.
Three-point, four-point-three.
Yes. That's the one that gives the applicant the right to designate four-hundred-and-ten spaces for the uses of whoever they want to use them. And if there were less than eight-hundred-and-twenty spaces, that would cut into that. The other thing is on the previous, I've been sitting here looking back and forth as I'm listening to the conversation. Previously, when we heard this in September last year, there was a map that showed the open space on it, and I think, Councilmember Shul, that's what you're speaking of, and I wondered why that map wasn't provided tonight, or whether the intention is to adhere to that map that was provided back in September.
It is. Nothing's changed as where the open space is.
And, and I'm also with Councilmember Shul, I've been looking for where in here it says that our, our payments are reduced based on how much they invest? So if someone could find that and point that out to us, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Are there other questions? Recognize Councilman.
Thank you. I had a question about how the council or how our staff has reviewed these TICER proposals in the past with an eye to the percentage of incremental tax value that we're willing to, to give to a developer and an incentive. I pulled the pro forma financial that was put together for this original incentive agreement back in September of last year, and it looked to me that the percentage of incremental tax value that the city agreed at that time to provide to this developer as an incentive to get the project underway was about seventy percent. Does that sound about right to you?
Yes.
Is that higher or lower than we have done in the past? I haven't made the practice to go back through and look at all of the projects we've done within a certain period of time. I just don't know how to judge that percentage as opposed to any other project that we've incentivized.
I don't have access to that information off the top of my head. Would have to go back and review that.
Councilman Reese, I mean, I don't have the, you know, the exact numbers off the top of my head. I can tell you, in my experience, it, it has varied. Typically, eighty percent has been a number that we've tried to stay under, although I think there's been some situations for some, some major projects who might even gone over a hundred percent. Not, you know, not, obviously for, you know, a specified period of time. But every, every deal, the staff looks at whether or not the money is required based on a lot of factors, what are the costs, what are the rates of return. This deal was a little bit different because Durham County was in- This deal is a little bit different because Durham County was involved as well, was, had an incentive in, which doesn't always happen. And then the other kind of more intrinsic situations that, that happen in terms of moving that percentage is, is this an incentive that's going to be a catalyst for something else? I can tell you, in this particular case, you know, this clearly was a project that was probably on the high side of where we wanted to be, but was seen to be a catalyst for really, you know, setting the, the mark for this Durham invention, you know, invention district and, and, you know, was, was very important. Other cases where we've had, say, the Chesterfield Building, or the 21C Building, you know, where that was a little bit different situation. We were trying to get a, a big empty building that had been empty for a long time, you know, to, to be redeveloped. I think in the Chesterfield case, it might even have been at 80%. So it, 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 there's not, there's not a hard and fast rule of thumb. But again, in this case, I think it was as much the, the, really getting the, the district off the ground that was, was the, the high priority. And as Jessica knows and developers know, that as phase twos and threes and fours of this project, assuming they come forth, I would expect we would have a different conversation about the, the level of, of incentives that would come toward that work.
I think I've been here long, anyone in this council with the exception of Mayor Protem, I've been involved in every incentive deal that this council has done, starting with the American Tobacco Corporation. And all of them are unique. You know, we've, I personally have tried to use the rule, rule of thumb, no more than 70%, because we always want to have money left over to pay for police protection, all the other stuff that comes along with it, so you don't give the whole ball of wax away. But by the same time, I think you look at what does it bring at the time, and what else are we looking for? So, you know, while there, there's no hard and fast rule. I think the council has to look at each individual project differently and decide if, in fact, this is what you want to do for this project, and what are the other things that it brings to it, pretty much what the manager said, but, like, I've been here, I've seen it, and I, I know the thought process that the councils have gone through since I've been here, when they give incentives for different projects. Like to have a hard and fast rule, but it, it all depends on what, what else you're trying to accomplish with that particular project, and what else it brings to, to the community, or potentially can bring to the community.
Recognize Councilwoman Schul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I support, I've supported this project when we did it, and I support it now. I do think, though, that we ought to hold a public hearing open for the following couple of reasons. I've looked at the contract, again, cursorily, I read it earlier today, and I, you know, I certainly could have missed it, but I didn't see anything that talked about a reduction in our incentive relative to any reduction in the investment amount. And I don't know if the city attorney's been able to find that either. So, so that seems like, I, I wouldn't want to support this without that change, and I understand that that is your intention as well, Ms. Brock. And then the other thing, I do think that the, the parking, the way it reads to me now is that, well, is, as I said originally, which I think is problematic, I think that if there's a reduction in parking spaces, that should be equally shared and, or, or the city should have 410. If, if there's a reduction, I wouldn't mind, you know, some sort of equal sharing, and you, you can talk to the administration.
I don't, I don't think our intention, our intention is to reduce it at all. So the clarifying points need to be that we need to reduce the incentives proportionally. If the actual GMP comes in less, then that is something that we're agreeable to, and then we also are agreeable to fixing the parking at 410, no matter if it fluctuates or not.
Thank you. And then maybe some more specificity on that parcel, that open space parcel.
We can reattach the map that has where it originally was.
Okay. And then my other comments were that I really am glad that we now have the, Patrick, the, included the section on the, the contract of workers, which is a good improvement in our incentive, in our incentive structure agreements, and I appreciate that, and that's a, I think that's, that's significant. And I hope that, you know, of course, we all hope that we don't have those situations. And I had one more comment too. Oh, yeah, just to mention also to you all, Reginald, that, you know, we had the recent audit that some of our incentive recipients had not been doing a good job of reporting their employment numbers, that Jermaine's department brought to us. And I just wanted to emphasize with this, this incentive that we need to have really good oversight with this project and, and all of our incentive projects in terms of holding the developers to their agreements in terms of our employment. And I just hope that you'll pass that on to, to the department.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if, I, I wouldn't mind at this point, if you're ready, Mr. Mayor, to move to continue this, or to, to, to keep it up.
I recognize the Mayor Protem.
I'd like to ask Patrick, if, can we close the public hearing tonight and then instruct staff to make the changes in the agreement? And can you do that by Thursday, so we can dispose of this? Because there are some financial considerations that the developer has to meet.
I've never been asked that question.
Close the public hearing.
We've typically just continued the public hearing, but I understand your, your question.
Is it legal? I know typical.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I think that you can close it, if you'd like.
Is anybody else here who wanted to speak on it? Just in terms of, just having some business sense and respect for it, I would offer a different approach, that we close the public hearing, instruct staff, you, to have the agreement ready by Thursday, so we can dispose of it at that time. Because it's not a lot, a whole lot, that you have to do, is it?
In, in terms of what I, and I've, I've written down the three things that have been addressed, I'll, I'll meet, well, Fred and I will meet with you tomorrow to make sure that we've got clarity of it. We'll reach out to your folks as well, to make sure everyone's on the same page. I don't know that there is, based on everything that I've heard, I don't know why we couldn't have something to you on Thursday to consider.
Yeah, we need to dispose of whatever we can in this cycle, because we have a lot of things.
Let's do this, because I, I want to respect those that raised the questions, and also respect the issue that the developer has. The people that raised the question, the colleagues, do you have a problem with that? I'm speaking specifically to Steve, since he's raised those questions.
So I wouldn't be able to vote in favor, no matter when we did it, of anything that didn't have these corrections.
Yeah, that's what I said.
So, you know, that, I just want to make that clear. In terms of closing the public hearing, I, I don't have a problem with it that I can think of, as long as we're, you know, we get these corrections made.
What about Councilwoman Moffett, since you raised a question?
I, I don't have a problem, I do not have a problem voting on it on Thursday. I would like to make sure, hear the three items repeated, just to make sure that we have them all in, if we're going to press this forward.
So, so I didn't write these for, for repeating, but I, I said 10% less investment equals 10% less city incentive, so there would be a, a scale, a, a percentage ratio. Clarify the parking spaces to be fixed at 410 in the section that you, you raised, Councilman Moffett, 3.4.3, and to specify the open space, are the three areas that I wrote down.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. That, I, and, yeah, I've been scanning back and forth through it, not only did I not find anything in here about a 10% reduction in our investment, I couldn't find anything regarding the capital investment required of the applicant. Now, that, it may be in here, I'm just missing it, but if you would just ensure that that is also included.
Mr. Mayor. I can ask Councilwoman Reese.
Thank you. Maybe I'm the only one here that doesn't understand, so I'm going to ask the question. Why are we departing so radically from our normal procedures in this instance? I'm sorry, why are we proposing to, to depart from our normal procedures in such a radical manner? Again, I understand people don't have a problem with it, I get that, but I, I'd like to know what the, what the problem is, I don't understand, so.
I, I think what we're trying to do is to get questions that have been raised answered, to satisfy those who raised the questions, to respect the timetable that the developer's on, and the fact that you don't have anyone here that wants to speak on this item from the public. Now, you might say, if you hold it open, people will come in, that's always the case, but assuming you don't have that type of an issue, simply trying to get the questions answered, respect the developer, and make a decision Thursday. And it might turn out that Thursday, that you still might not have enough votes to pass it. If it is, that's what it is.
I guess the, there've been a couple of oblique references to the developer's timetable, and I didn't know that I missed part of the memo. Was that communicated to others? I, I don't know what that means.
So it, it's been announced, we have a lead tenant, we're in the, we have the ability to buil- build both buildings at the same time and the parking deck, however, we have to close our financing, which is contingent upon this agreement. So we've been working at this, the city manager and I, I don't know, for three or four months, and so continuing it just will further delay the project, which ultimately will put the lead tenant in jeopardy. I have to hit a timetable with them, and so if I'm not able to do that, then they will not be in a...
You might have wanted to lead with that.
Nobody likes too much pressure, right?
And, child, I didn't have any more information than you did, I just sensed that that was a developer issue, so.
All right.
You heard, I, I heard the same time you heard it for the first time, okay, let me say it that way.
How's it?
Yes, if you don't mind.
I move, Mr. Mayor, that we close the public hearing and ask the city attorney to clarify in the contract agreement the items that were posed this evening. Is that enough?
By Thursday.
By Thursday? Do I need, what's the date?
10th.
October, the 23rd.
20th.
October 20th at 1:00. Any other specificity?
Second, I got it. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved to second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
We move back to the items that have been pulled, item seven, Mayor Protem pulled out item, this resolution in support of the Equal Rights Amendment.
This item was so important that I felt that it needed to be read. And so ladies, would you introduce yourselves, because I'm too excited to introduce you.
Gloria Dela Santos, Action NC statewide director of State with Women and Families Campaign here in North Carolina.
Hi, I'm Marina Graul, I'm a Durham resident. I am the chair of NC for ERA and the co-chair of ERNC State Alliance.
I am also a Durham resident.
That adds to the excitement. And this is the resolution, resolution in support of the Equal Rights Amendment. Whereas the city of Durham forthrightly supports equal rights for the citizens of Durham, and women constitute over 53% of the citizenry of Durham. That's power. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say. Whereas Mayor William V. Bill Bell witnessed in the Women's Equality Day proclamation for August 26, 2016, that women play a critical role in families, the workplace, and in society as a whole, contributing to our economy and advancing our nation. And whereas, women continue to, to confront a lack of political parity, workplace discrimination, healthcare inequities, disparate rates of poverty, rape and domestic violence assaults, and whereas the U.S. Constitution does not explicitly guarantee that all rights that it protects are held equally by all citizens without regard to sex. And whereas, the Fourteenth Amendment's equal protection clause has never been interpreted to guarantee equal rights for women in the same way the ERA would, by situating sex as a suspect category invoking strict judicial scrutiny, just as race, national origin, and religion do. And whereas, state laws are not uniform, and federal laws are not comprehensive. Additionally, these laws can be repealed or reduced. And whereas, the amendment would help correct systemic sex discrimination, and whereas the ERA was passed by Congress in 1972 and ratified by 35 of the 38 states necessary to put it into the Constitution, yet was assumed to have expired in 1982. And whereas Congress can alter time limits in the proposing clauses of amendments, and the deadline for ERA appeared only in the preamble and not in the actual legislation. And whereas Senator Floyd R. B. McKissick Jr. and Representative Carla Cunningham introduced ERA ratification bills in the North Carolina General Assembly in 2015, long session with Senator Mike Woodard cosponsoring the Senate bill, and Representative Masha cosponsoring the House bill. And our legislators will introduce like bills in 2017. And whereas, U.S. Representatives G.K. Butterfield, David Price, and Alma Adams cosponsored bills in the 114th Congress to pass an ERA, and to lift the time limits on the states for ratifying the ERA, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Durham calls on Congress to pass into law a bill to pass an ERA, and remove the time limit for ratification of the ERA, so that ratification shall be achieved upon the affirmative votes of 38 states, of which 35 have already been ratified. And be it found and resolved that the city of Durham calls on the North Carolina General Assembly to pass into law a bill to ratify the ERA to the U.S. Constitution as proposed by Congress on March 22, 1972. And ladies, let me just add, I am a member of women in municipal government on the state and national level, and I will be taking this card, this resolution with me to their meetings, one is in this month, and the other is in March. Thank you so much for being a part of this momentous occasion.
Thank you.
Thank you. You want to say something? I don't know.
I appreciate her yielding and letting me talk for just a moment. I want to reiterate the gratitude that we feel, especially when we're talking about women's civil rights to be recognized in this kind of a forum. It's critically relevant right now. We've actually been shocked into a national conversation about sexual discrimination. So the act that you're taking tonight is historic. This is the first municipality to reengage with the Equal Rights Amendment since the 70s and the 80s. You're actually witnessing to not just Durham, but to this entire state and our country, that, yes, women's civil rights are important. So thank you so much.
You want to picture? Blue pullout.
Entertaining motion on the item.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes seven to zero.
All right, thank you. We move to item 13, construction manager at risk guarantee maximum price amendments for balance of trades with Lee Chase. for balance of trades with Lee Chase Construction Services for the police headquarters complex and CIP ordinance amendment. Recognize Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any additional comments on this item, I just wanted to vote on it separate from the consent agenda.
It's been properly moved in second. Madam Clerk, will you open the vote? Close the vote.
It passes six to one, with Councilmember Johnson voting out.
Let me ask, are there any other items to come before the council at this time? If not, the council's adjourned at 8:08 PM. Thank you.